Now, starting the September 5th, 2019, planning commission meeting. Mr. Kane, will you take role?
Daly.
Here.
Friedrich.
Here.
Honig.
Here.
Horgan.
Here.
Erwin.
Here.
Kostrova.
Here.
Leish.
Here.
Hortman.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is approval of the August 1st, 2019, regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is zoning board of appeals report. Commissioner Friedrich?
In our first meeting of 2019, we had two cases. The first was Urgent Care Express at 520 North Mission was seeking a variance to the sign standards to install a band sign in the gable feature above their entrance because there is limited space above or near the entrance to their business to install the sign. The zoning board found that though there is enough room above the door to install a sign, the roof overhang limits the visibility of the sign from the street. Therefore, the variance was granted in a split decision. In the second case, Patricia Lyon at 1111 West Pickard Street installed a fence around her yard with a zoning permit, but it was later discovered that the fence was built on a retaining wall resulting in the overall height exceeding the four-foot and six-foot limits. The zoning board found that the unique topography of her property was sufficient grounds to grant their variance in a unanimous decision. That's it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is communications. Mr. Kane?
Yes, we have six communications tonight, four in your packet. Those were from Ms. Cochran regarding the potential M2, I'm sorry, M20 reroute from High Street to Pickard Street. Ms. Ashworth regarding Z1902. Ms. Harper regarding SUP1911. Mr. Struble regarding SUP1911. And then two on the dais this evening. The first for Mr. Olivieri regarding Z1902. And for Mr. LaBelle regarding TC1905.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Next item on the agenda is public hearings, starting with SUP1908 and SPR1912. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first case tonight is a request from McDonald's for a special use permanent site plan review related to the addition of a second queue lane to the existing drive-through at that restaurant. Property in question is Zone CD4 with the future land use of commercial/Mission redevelopment overlay district. As noted in the site plan, this site has been a McDonald's drive-through restaurant for several decades. Property owner is McDonald's and the site area is one and a half acres. Property is located, actually is three street frontages. Principal street frontage is on East Pickard Street. It also has property frontage on Palmer Street at the rear of the restaurant and a small portion of frontage with access to a parking lot off of North Mission Street. The zoning of surrounding properties is the same as the subject property, CD4. Future land use is generally the same as well, commercial, with some of those properties that are located adjacent to Mission Street also having that Mission redevelopment overlay zone. Future land use immediately to the south is the one exception. There are a couple of properties in that southern area that have a future land use of urban residential. This is a picture of the existing restaurant viewed from East Pickard Street looking toward the east. You'll see, I visited the site around, I think it was 1:30 or 2 o'clock in the afternoon. This is actually the queue line for the, I can't get my pointer to work, but the queue line for the drive-through, that black car and the gold minivan are actually in the queue even at 2 o'clock going into that drive-through, potentially necessitating the addition of the second drive-through lane. Here's a view of the property from Palmer looking towards the northeast. So again, this would be the rear of the restaurant from Palmer Street looking back in. The existing drive-through queue basically wraps around this side of the restaurant to the order board. The delivery windows are on the opposite side of the building. Drive-through restaurants are subject to a special use permit in the CD4 zoning district. There are four special use conditions that are unique to the use and three of the four apply in this case in the proposed site plan and use meet all of those three criteria. This is an overview of the site plan. Again, you'll see in the area where the existing drive-through queue is, McDonald's is proposing to provide a loading zone for deliveries, unloading and unloading. Immediately to the west of that area is the double drive-through queue and stacking space, meeting the code requirement of having 200 feet of drive-through stacking. From that point, in the menu boards, the drive-through queue continues around the back of the restaurant in the same manner that it does today with the pickup windows located on the east side of the restaurant. There's some minor reconfiguration of the parking area to the west to accommodate that drive-through queue addition. In addition to the site changes that are proposed, McDonald's is also proposing to do a remodel of the restaurant, which will include a new facade on the front of the building. This is that proposed building facade under the proposed conditions. We'll go through the site plan review in a moment, but the facade and other building standards are met as submitted. So again, the submitted site plan meets all the plan requirements of the zoning ordinance. Staff has included some conditions of approval that will ensure that all of the relevant minimums of the zoning ordinance are met. There is no changes proposed to the building footprint in this case, and the existing building does have some non-conforming setbacks on the front side, but those are not impacted because they're not proposed to be changed. The applicant is updating the facades of the building, the principal facade and the three other elevations. Those facade modifications satisfy the requirements of this district. In terms of vehicle parking standards, the site will retain 50 vehicle parking spaces after the construction is complete. There is a partial reduction in on-site parking due to the addition of that second drive-through queue lane. The applicant's also proposing 10 bicycle parking spaces, which meets the minimum requirements of the ordinance. Four of those spaces are located at a greater distance from the entrance than is allowed by code, so that's one of the conditions of approval that's recommended tonight that can be updated in the final site plan. The site is already compliant with our requirements for loading, storage, the drive-through, recycling, trash receptacles, and other requirements, as noted there. In terms of landscaping, the proposed private landscaping satisfies the requirements of the CD4 district. The proposed private additional screening and public landscaping, there are still a few items that need to be addressed, and again, those have been included in staff's recommendation of approval tonight. In addition to site lighting, there are a handful of lights in the parking lot that don't comply with the city's lighting code under Section 96, and so we are recommending that that be included in their conditions of approval tonight as well, that that non-conforming lighting be brought into compliance with that code. So with that, staff's recommendation is approval of the special use permit and site plan with the following conditions. One, that 10 bicycle parking spaces be provided, meeting the specifications of the planning department. Two, that the site lighting be brought into conformance with city code. Three, that a landscape plan be provided that meets the standards of the ordinance. Four, because of the nature, the high-traffic nature of the development and the expansion of that drive-through use, staff is asking that high emphasis crosswalk markings be provided at the driveways to ensure the safety of pedestrians that are passing by the restaurant. And five, that the applicant comply with the requirements of public works and public safety. I'd welcome the opportunity to answer any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kane? Okay, if the applicant would like to come up?
Good evening. My name is Frank Martin, architect with Dorch and Martin Associates. I think I was with you a year, year and a half ago when we worked on the Mission Street project. Tonight with me is the owner-operator of the store, Jim over here, and John Lorenson, who is an area construction manager for McDonald's, who was involved with the Mission Street project and will be involved with this project with the contractor and with overseeing the scheduling and so forth. So if you have any questions operationally or construction-wise, McDonald, they have some answers for you. Yes?
Yes, sir, I've got one. I am a continual customer of this restaurant. I lived right over there, but I always come in through Palmer Street, Palmer Street, and it's very, very easy to get from Palmer Street to where you order coffee on the electronic sign right now. Under this plan, I see that anybody coming in from Palmer Street, I'm not the only one, at 7 o'clock in the morning, there's, you know, there's a major congestion right there. I see I'm going to have to go all the way around the building, all the way over to Pickard Street and all the way around the building to get to your planned, to get to your planned electronic where you order, is that correct?
This particular...
The placement, the placement is surprising to me, really. I thought you would keep the electronics sort of where, sort of where they are right now. There's, to me, there wasn't room there to have both your electronics where they currently, you know, two lanes where they currently are right now? You've done a big, big redesign to this.
And I can understand what you're talking about, but on our first visit with Jacob when we started to do this project, there's a certain code requirement in the ordinance that would not allow us to provide a drive-through equipment in the area that you're talking about it being. If we wanted to put a double drive-through, it would have to be back to where we put it on this plan in order to meet the zoning ordinance, and I think Jacob can address that for you.
Yeah. Well, I'm just surprised because for all the cars that come in off of Palmer, including my car, always about 7 o'clock in the morning, for the very, very good coffee and other things that they have, we're going to, there's going to, there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be a lot of around traffic there that wasn't there before.
There's definitely going to be a relearning curve.
No question.
Because we, in order to meet the criteria of the ordinance, we were forced to place it in this position. We would have otherwise placed it down further towards Palmer Street, but we were unable to do that.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
And I have to say that...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I like the placement, but, and I use that restaurant, as Kelly Fountain, one of your managers, knows, I use that restaurant probably four or five times a week at 7 o'clock in the morning.
Well, we're hoping that with the improvements to the addition of the double drive-through and the improvements to the site, meeting the zoning ordinance, that it will be an overall improvement with the activity on the site and the stacking. We had to get McDonald's to give special approval to this location of the side-by-side because it isn't in a traditional place of a McDonald's. So, and you can also, I think, agree that the challenge when you're surrounded by three streets and you have four curb cuts entering the street, the fact that we were able to make this site work was miraculous to me, that we were able to meet the ordinance. So we did everything we could so that we could have an improvement on the site, and that's what we have.
I mean, they could have shortened the building.
Yeah, I don't know about that.
Well, I don't think they want them to shorten the building.
But, you know, overall, the improvements look good, but we'll see whether this works, you know, if the ordinance demands it, well, you know, there's a lot of question marks on the ordinance, but we'll see whether it works over time.
And I'm sure when...
I will let you know whether I move, whether I move on to Mrs. Robert for coffee.
Well, and again, I'm sure that, you know, a facility's been there for 20 or 30 years and a certain standard has been there, and it's like anything, in order to make some improvements and meet the zoning ordinance, we did our best, and I hope that...
Certainly at 7 o'clock in the morning, there is enough activity there to justify two, I call them electronic stations, but drive-throughs. There's, and they're, you know, we see them all the time in McDonald's, but we'll see whether this location in fact works.
Thanks for your comments.
The way you want it to or not.
Madam Chair, Daly?
Is that just a kind of a designated zebra crossway there on, it looks like it bisects the lanes? At first, I thought it was a bridge. I said, "I'm pretty sure they're not going to pay the money to put in a bridge." So that's just a, just kind of a designated walkway?
That's right. Now...
It looks like stairs, but apparently those are barrier-free...
That's a, it's a concrete crosswalk that goes from the sidewalk that we're providing from Palmer Street. We're making it accessible from Palmer Street for pedestrians, and we're also doing the same thing from Pickard Street. And in order to do that, we are crossing with a concrete lane that also has kind of piano-keyed kind of crosswalks as, like we're putting across the driveway approaches. And that will get to the, that's a barrier-free ramp that's there also, and we have a barrier-free ramp over on the drive-through side of the building up near the front.
What is the ramp? Do you lift you from the crosswalk up to the skirting?
Yeah, when you go across the crosswalk, you're at pavement level.
Okay.
And then you get, and you go up the ramp. Yes.
I do have a question. The way this is laid out, if someone's coming in through that mini parking lot off Mission Street?
Okay.
And people are coming in off Palmer Street, they're going to be kind of coming at a 90-degree angle to each other, and then they're expected to condense down into this, and drive all the way around the building to get to the...
It's interesting that you mentioned that Glenn. Before, for me, I had to drive 50 yards, and it looks now like I'm going to have to circle all around, probably drive 250 yards in an area that gets at 7 o'clock in the morning quite congested. It's a, it's a, to me, it's, immediately strikes me as a strange configuration.
And that driveway off Palmer has to be there, it can't be moved to the eastern part?
No. Again, the challenge with the site, the way it is, with the driveways, having the traffic flow in a one-way direction the way we need it to flow, it may be that part of the learning curve that happens with the redesign of this is people who might be on Mission Street going north may go to the corner and turn the corner and go into the other entrance. It's either go around the building or go into, into that way. So it is a challenge, but I think it's going to be workable, and I think it's going to be, I think it's going to work out well.
Okay, you sure you want to do this?
What's that?
Said, "You sure you want to do this?"
Well, talk to this gentleman right here.
Okay, all right. It's...
Sir, if you want to speak, if you could come to the microphone. Folks at home can, and we can't record it if you're speaking from the audience, so we can hear you, but they can't. Yeah, I can explain it. I mean, essentially, this site has three front yards because it has three street frontages, and the way city code is always treated, street frontages is as a front yard, and the code doesn't allow for drive-through queues to be placed in a front yard. So the drive-through queue is essentially being placed in the side yard in this situation. I think you'd see many of the, many of the elements you're describing, concerns about that relate to that placement, would exist with a double queue configuration, even if it were put at the back of the building. I don't think you avoid many of those elements.
Well, if it was put in the back of the building, I see one thing, everybody off of Palmer would only have to drive their 50 yards.
Yeah, everybody at Palmer and Mission.
And now they've got to go all the way around.
Yeah. They wouldn't be running into it.
How do you, how do you go in? Because...
Right here. I go right...
Well, I know how you go in, but when we would go in that way, we would always have to drive down to the front, to front, and then come back up to get in line. You could never cut into the line.
Cheaters just turn quickly after they come on right and then sneak into the lane in front of law-abiding citizens.
Yeah, well, you're lucky you were able to do that. We've not been able to do that. We've just always gone down and made the turn around where the traffic comes in from Pickard and got it...
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no.
The whole thrust behind this is to make it, make your service quicker, I assume, is that right? With the double...
Well, for a couple, a couple things, to make it more efficient and faster and also reduce stacking, that can back up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't doubt with it, with where it is right now. I've seen 10, 12 cars in a row there, and you guys have two. At 7:00 in the morning, it's really...
Now, now we have space between where the order positions, where the menu boards are, up to the window where you pay. We have availability of stacking in there too. And Kate, and if you have special orders, you can pull off to the side or go up to the third window, so.
I'll tell you, I'm skeptical, but we shall see. Okay?
Thanks for your comment.
We should go together.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant?
I just have one, quick one. Does that, I really can't read this. Are you having two pickup windows or just one?
There's one pickup window, the one that's the pickup window right now remains, and then we're bringing the vestibule forward, and in that vestibule, there's a third window for a special order. For example, if you, your order was not correct or you wanted something else, instead of pulling across the aisle for your order, you can pull up and the staff can come and hand you that order there. You don't pay there, you just pick it up, and a car can go around you. And that happens to be in all new McDonald's that are built right now, there are three windows on the side. One pickup window, a third window up ahead, and the cash window that you first come to.
I, it was weird in McDonald's for, before a lot of the people in the room were born. I'm against special orders. I think it's, dang it. It's on the thing, it's good food, do that.
Anything else for the applicant? Thank you.
And that's all. If you have any other questions, be glad to answer it. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for public comment. If anyone would like to comment, now's the opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, I'm closing public comment and opening discussion.
Move to approve SUP1908 and SPR1912, subject to the following conditions. One, 10 bicycle parking spaces shall be provided, meeting the specifications of the planning and community development department. Two, all site lighting must conform to Section 96.13 of Mount Pleasant City Code. Three, a landscaping plan shall be provided which complies with all landscape, street screen, screen and public frontage improvement requirements of the zoning ordinance. Four, high emphasis crosswalk marking shall be provided at all driveways. Five, the applicant shall comply with requirements of divisions of public works and public safety.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, I am on the agenda as SUP1909. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Want to thank Becky for running upstairs and giving me some batteries, saving me a few steps tonight. So our next case is a request for a short-term rental at 1026 and 1026 and a half South Vancher Street. Subject property is Zone CD3, suburban with a future land use of urban residential. The current and proposed use would remain as a two-family dwelling with this short-term rental designation. The property owner is Alyssa Britton, and the site area is .32 acres. This particular site is located on the south end of Vancher Street between Bellows and Gielart Streets. The uses surrounding the property are generally consistent with the use of this property, single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, and there are some additional rooming dwellings to the west. Future land use in the area is generally urban residential. Zoning in the area is generally CD3 suburban. This is a view of the property looking from the front on South Vancher Street towards the northwest, so the subject property would be here. There's a carport provided for the property as well. It's a fairly wide lot by the standards of that particular section of South Vancher Street. This is a view of the property from the backyard at the rear looking toward the northeast. This particular block of South Vancher Street doesn't have a rear alley, so this, to my rear, would just be the property line to those properties to the west. You recall, short-term rentals are subject to a special use permit in the CD3 zoning district. There are a number of special use permit criteria that are applied to a short-term rental. In this case, the proposed short-term rental would satisfy all of those special use permit criteria. That first permit criteria, however, does relate to some discretionary considerations of the planning commission related to the lot area, any existing non-conformities or any other conditions of approval the planning commission may wish to implement on that short-term rental, and I've indicated as such in the table in your report and on the screen. So with that, staff recommends approval of the special use permit, subject to the requirements of the division of public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any questions for Mr. Kane? If the applicant would like to come up?
Hi. My husband and I own the house. We currently live on the larger side of the duplex, and we'd just like to use the smaller side as a short-term rental, so. Any questions for me?
I'm your neighbor.
Sorry?
I'm your neighbor.
Oh, really?
I walk by, my little dog by every day.
Oh, really? Well, I hope we're doing good stuff. We're trying to make improvements.
Well, you are. We're very excited to have you in the neighborhood.
Great.
How long have you and your husband owned that property?
We got the keys on the 15th of June.
Oh, from this year?
Sorry?
This year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So this is going to be like an, this is an Airbnb property now?
Yeah, for the time being, yeah.
Jason, are they in the have to live in the duplex kind of rule?
No, no.
Yep, both sides are registered rentals, so.
Would you have bought it if they were, if you had to, if you had to live there?
Probably not.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. And now I'm opening the public comment portion of this hearing, if anyone from the public would like to comment. Seeing no one, I'm closing public comment and opening discussion.
Move to approve SUP1909, subject to the following condition. The applicant shall comply with the requirements of division of public safety.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next, I am on the agenda is SUP1910 and SPR1913. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next item tonight is a revision to a previously approved special use permanent site plan review for 1015 Douglas Street. Property in question is Zone CD4, general urban, with a special requirement, student organization dwelling and rooming dwelling. Future land use is multiple residential medium. The request is, again, a modification of a previously approved special use permanent site plan review to construct a two-unit rooming dwelling for a total of nine occupants. Current and prior use of the property, both under construction today and prior to demolition of the previous structure, was a rooming dwelling for nine units. Property owner is Washington Village LLC, and the site area is .19 acres. Back in June of 2018, the planning commission approved the first special use permanent site plan review for the proposed demolition of an existing dwelling and a replacement of that dwelling with a new two-unit rooming dwelling. Subsequent to that, the applicant has begun construction on that new dwelling, that new two-unit dwelling. In the process of that construction, the applicant has determined that they would desire to reconfigure the rear parking area from a stacked parking configuration to a more traditional parking lot configuration, to eliminate a walkway that had been proposed to cross the site from Douglas Street to the rear along the south side of the dwelling, and to reconfigure the front entrance of the dwelling so that the staircase to the porch is located facing out to Douglas Street as opposed to facing out to the side of the property. The particular property is located on South Douglas Street between Bellows and Clayton. This is opposite of the CMU surplus auction site, for those who might be wondering. Properties immediately to the west are Zone SDU University. Properties north, south, and east are all Zone CD4 with the same future land use designation as the subject property. This is a view of the current conditions of the property, looking toward the east from Douglas Street. You'll see, this is probably, looks a little bit different now, as you get close to the end of construction, the outside starts to accelerate a little bit faster, but essentially, construction of the dwelling has taken place substantively. This is a view from the rear alley looking toward the west of that structure. Again, the main change here is in this back area in the configuration of the proposed parking area. As before, the proposed use conforms with all the special use permit criteria for a rooming dwelling in the CD4 district. This is an overview of the new proposed site plan. Contrary to the plan that was approved in June 2018, as I said, the parking that's located at the rear now has a driveway, driveway aisle to provide access and back-in, back-out opportunities for all of the proposed parking spots at that rear. The other principal changes from the plan you saw before, again, initially, a staircase was proposed here off the southern edge of the porch to a sidewalk. Now a sidewalk, a set of stairs is proposed to stretch out from the center of the porch toward Douglas Street. The sidewalk that was initially proposed along the southern edge of the property is no longer proposed. The applicant has also proposed to make some changes to the landscaping around the back of the site and to remove some of the existing landscaping that is present on the southern edge of the property line today in order to facilitate the installation of their stormwater infrastructure. Going through site plan review, the proposed site plan satisfies all the requirements of the ordinance as submitted and meets all of the standards of the CD4. and meets all of the standards of the CD4 zoning district. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the special use permit and site plan review, subject to the requirements of public works and public safety. Madam Chair.
I do have a question, because in here it says it was approved for seven occupants.
Yes, as I was talking, I was having that same question myself.
That's why the different parking, right? So you can...
Yeah, it was for nine. So the report's wrong, not the...
Or it wasn't for seven in the first place?
Yeah, it was for nine. It would have been for nine before, and nine now. It's based on land area and building area, so it's nine and nine.
Yeah, I was wondering how they were going to manage that with the floor plan probably already done, now they're going to fit in two more people.
Generally speaking, people ask for the maximum upfront, so.
Anyone else have questions for...
When I look at those pictures, and I look at Mr. LeBell's letter, is that what a roof pitch of eight divided by 12 looks like?
Yes.
That's the slant that we have to deal with for an eight divided by 12, okay?
The back thing is not an 812 roof.
And certainly, the veranda can't be 812.
No, but the main roof is, it looks to be an 812.
Yeah, I know.
But neither the, this, which is, I think, a little overhang over the back door, and whatever...
But that, this is, this is an example of a pitch of a roof that is eight slash 12.
Well, as is, as is this building right here. And more than likely, this building right here. And this one right here.
This brings up a kind of more general comment. The, the information that we get, when you say building standards, the proposed building meets all required building standards, that isn't as helpful as if you actually highlighted the standards and then how it meets it. I know that's probably more information than a lot of people would like, but being as, the drawings are so small, and we can't really read things like setbacks. I think it would just help, as for me as a planning commission, and probably everybody else on here, to have that information for each project that comes forward. I love that we have projects coming forward, but it just, so that we can kind of familiarize ourselves with the codes for each different type of character zone. So, for example, this is in the CD4 with a RSO designation. So just like on building standards, what does that look like, and how does this meet it?
Sure.
So that these, some of these questions that we ask, we have to ask because we can't, we can't read it for ourselves or figure it out, because there's, so that's just moving forward, just...
Yeah, I'm happy, happy to do that.
Because I know you already do it. It's just we don't, it would make the document 20 pages, or, you know, it'd make it thicker.
I hope not.
It would make it thicker, but at least then we can, for those of us who like details, can kind of poke.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane? If the applicant would like to come up?
Good evening. My name's Tim Beebe. I'm with Central Michigan Surveying Development. The owner is Rick McGurk, and he is here in the audience, if you have any questions. Your planner did an excellent job of going through this, so unless you have specific questions for me, I'll sit back down.
Mr. Beebe, what was the reason for changing the parking configuration? Seems like a lot of work to come before us again for that, so there must have been a reason behind it.
Experience, basically Rick's experience with the units that he has with stacking versus, versus non-stack parking. If there's any way to do it with a drive aisle, he wanted to do it with a drive aisle. He came and asked, when they were getting started, he just kind of shook his head and said, "Yeah, there's no way to do this?" And I said, "Hmm, let me double-check." So when, when the site plan first came through, and Mr. Olivier put it through, he had proposed stacking. It just fits. We have like two feet on the outside of each edge. So there's just enough room to put it in there, but it makes it easier and less complaints for, for the manager.
So your opinion on stacking is it's not as desirable as a drive-through?
It's just like at home, when somebody's parked behind you, and you've got to move the car to get, it's no different, except you've got to knock on a door perhaps next door to get somebody to move. So it's, it's more desirable, and it is what they would like to see when they, when they can do it.
Yes, my question was in regards to, what was the decision behind wanting to eliminate the walkway?
The walkway? There's access to the front and access to the back. At first, we were bringing the sidewalk, or the access from the porch to the south, and the stairs were coming down. So there was going to have to be a sidewalk coming along that edge anyway. When we moved that to the middle of the porch, then there wasn't, there wasn't a sidewalk already coming in, and so there was no need to take it to the back. You can come in through the front, and go through the building, and go to the back. So there's not really a need, and what that would do is encourage people other than those who live there to walk through that sidewalk area.
So this is two, two issues. The stairway and the, and the walkway is, is one issue, and the non-stack parking is a different issue. The two aren't related?
No, no, they're not.
Okay.
Because moving, moving that to the front makes it look more like a standard residential dwelling. So that was, that was something that, that the owner wanted to see differently.
Okay.
And by doing that, then I didn't have the need for that sidewalk along the side. So that went away. The, the parking was a totally different.
Well, just as I was reading it, and we're going to change the walkway, and I thought somehow the two were connected. I just, thank you for clearing that up.
Two totally different reasons.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open up public comment, if anyone would like to comment on this hearing. Seeing no one, I'm closing public comment and opening discussion.
I move that we approve SUP 1911 and SPR 1914, subject to the following conditions. Oops, wrong one.
Close call.
She was close.
Save Ms. McConnell a few hours.
Comply with the requirements of the Division of Public Works and Public Safety.
I think you might need to start that over, because you did give them the wrong numbers.
I, I move that we approve SUP 1910 and SPR 1913, subject to the following conditions. Comply with the requirements of the Division of Public Works and Public Safety.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is SUP 1911 and SPR 1914.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next public hearing is a special use permit and site plan review for 520 South Fancher. This is a request for a group daycare home for up to 12 children. Property in question is Zone CD3, suburban. Future land use of urban residential. Home is currently used as a single-family dwelling with a family daycare home. Family daycare home is a licensed daycare for up to six children. A group daycare home allows for seven to 12 children, which is the request tonight. Unlike a group daycare home, a family daycare home is allowed by right without a special use permit in this district. Property owner is the applicant, Ms. McConnell, and the site area is .2 acres. Property is located on South Fancher Street. Again, it is in a, in the CD3 zoning district. All of the properties to the north, south, east, and west, at a great distance, are in that same zoning district with the same future land use of urban residential. This is a view of the subject property from Fancher Street, looking toward the west. This is a view of the proposed play area, a portion of it, looking again towards the west. So back to this picture, you see there's a porticoche. It's basically an overhang that you can drive through, that's located here on the north side of the building. So this perspective is basically in front of that vehicle that's in this picture. I'd be standing there. So this is a portion of that play area that's required under the code. Here's a view from the back. This would be the southwest corner of the property, looking towards the northeast. Again, the proposed, a portion of the proposed play area for the children. As I mentioned, group daycare homes are subject to a special use permit in the CD3 zoning district. There's a number of standards related to the amount of play area that's provided both within the home, as well as outside of the home, in order to obtain that special use permit. In this case, site plan drawings and floor plan drawings have been provided as custom for this use, and the applicant has satisfied all of those requirements. You'll note that in, in the earlier pictures, you may have observed, observed that this property does have an in-ground swimming pool that's located immediately to the rear of the dwelling. The building official is recommending that, as a requirement of approval tonight, that any pool barriers on that site, this site be brought into compliance with current requirements under the Mission Again Building Code, just to ensure that there aren't any accidents related to the existence of that pool on the property. Beyond that, staff is recommending approval of the group daycare home and the special use permit and site plan review, subject to that condition that I just mentioned, the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the use, and that the group daycare home receive annual inspections, subject to the zoning ordinance by the building official and fire marshal, to ensure compliance with all current codes. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kane?
Mr. Kane, is this neighborhood, subject to the neighborhood parking restrictions around the university, or is this far enough away that it's not? Okay.
What, what kind of pool barriers would be compliant? Chain link.
Hit me with these Michigan Building Code questions. Generally speaking, it will have to do with fencing, the type of gates, and the nature of generally self-closing gates, certain types of latches to open and close gates, as well as, in this case, the method, the barrier would include exiting from the home to that space. So window alarms and locks, things of that nature, to ensure there's no accidental entry into the pool area. The pool area is, basically, becomes a controlled space. I can't say that I can speak to every nuance of that, but essentially, that ensures that that pool area would be at the same level of security as a pool that was constructed today, under permit.
Okay. Is there any special regulations about having a daycare with a pool?
No. No, I mean, as I mentioned, this site is already licensed by the state as a family daycare home.
Okay.
How deep is the pool?
That'd be a good question for the applicant. I haven't been to a pool party yet.
Mr. Kane, is this, this special use permit, just to be clear, it stays with this property?
Correct.
Okay, so these people move out, somebody else moves in, this special use permit stays there?
Correct, and if they purchase a different home in the city to move the business, they'd need to come to the Planning Commission for a special use permit for that location.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane?
So, so if they move and they want to have a daycare in a different place, does the, the special use permit for that property then stay there? Or do they, what do they do? Is petition to, "We want to carry our special use permit with us"?
It would be a new special use permit for the new property. You're not issuing a permit to the business, you're issuing a permit to the site. So someone could purchase this property and operate a group daycare home under the same conditions as Ms. McConnell, or if she moved to 516 South Fancher Street even, she would need to come back for, for a new special use permit at that location.
A new one?
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane? If the applicant would like to come up?
My name is Tori McConnell, and I am the owner of my daycare. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, hi there. You're, the, the pool, the pool sort of concerns me. I mean, I, I remember when my kids were little, the one thing, and you're going to have up to 12 little kids. How deep is that pool?
Nine feet.
Nine feet deep? And you're going to have up to 12 little kids there. Are you, are you certified to be a lifeguard or something?
I have been certified in lifeguard, yes, not currently.
To me, I mean, in my experience, a pool and 12 little kids, in my case, a pool and three little kids is just an accident waiting to happen. Tell me about the barriers. Tell me about the barriers that are going to prevent an accident from happening when we've got a pool and up to 12 little kids there.
If you have, do you have the, your map on?
Yeah, I've got it right in front of me here, but tell me.
The back door, there are two exits off of that deck. So, where are we? Okay, you have, the one that you saw in the picture, where the stairs were going down, that is a side exit off, off the deck, going north. There is another set of stairs, which would be blocked off, that head west. The fence would go up to the stairway, heading north, so there would be no access, because there would be a gate also with latches. You can also access this play area through the carport. So I don't even have to go out my back door. That even comes near the access to the pool, because I can go out the side entrance, go through the fence, and just go by the pool that has a four-foot fence, because that's the required height.
And there, is there now...
And then the fence will continue on through, so it would run north and south, so allowing the access to the play area that's already, the plastic play area that's there.
You're, with 12 kids, you're going to have some helpers there, I assume?
I have to have helpers. I'm only allowed to have...
And all of your helpers will be lifeguard certified as well?
My current assistant is lifeguards, she's actually a lifeguard supervisor. She actually can hold lifeguard classes.
I mean, the rule is you have to have one?
One for every six.
One for every six?
So on your application, you have that your total number of employees will be three? That's in addition to you?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
On your application? It says, "Total number of employees there will be three." Is that in addition to you? Or is that including you?
Well, my daughter's eight, she's able to be an assistant, so she can be there. I was just putting what I would, could have.
Okay, so there won't necessarily be three people there all the time?
Two.
But it'll always be two people? Okay.
So parking comes up. It sounds like you're hoping that parents will be dropping off their kids via the carport. Am I...
They use the carport, or they pull right up to the, we have parking on each side of the road. We know that we can't access that during the evening, like during October and May overnight, but we don't, you just pull up, and you can bring your children in.
Pull up to the curb?
Correct.
Is that what you mean?
But yes, we do use the carport, and we salt it and shovel it.
Is the pool a consistent nine-feet deep, or is it...
No, it's a gradual, it's shallow.
Shallow, and it, its deepest part is nine feet.
I think three will do the trick. Yeah, I, I don't know that nine feet is going to do any more damage than three feet if you've got a, a, a four-year-old, or a six-year-old, or something.
I have to have this projected, but... This, the requirement allows you to have, be able to use a park within, how many feet? Do you remember?
Five hundred.
But we are .29 from the closest park, and honestly, we don't spend a lot of time in our yard. I know that's, you can say that, I can stand here and say that, and it mean nothing. We are on the go with the kids. We go to the nursing home, we go to the library, we go to the parks, we go to farmer's market. We are not, we rarely use our yard, but I have to legally do this.
I have a question for, I mean, in regards, it kind of made me think about the winter parking, because of your own vehicles and the carport being used as a play area during the winter, where would you have your own parking?
The carport is not used. That, what he was saying is the carport... The carport is not used. That, what he was saying is the carport leads into the fence that is the play area. Can you bring that screen up?
That's, that's up on the screen now, so essentially...
I think the carport and the driveway are, are wide enough for four cars, I think, probably.
Okay.
Yeah, that overnight, and that parking prohibition is only part of the, only overnight. So during operating hours for a daycare, there would not be a need to be parked off the street by that point.
And they don't all come at the same time? I don't have a seven-
For your own, your own parking, if that was where you parked in the evening, or, or that's, I mean, like, for use of your own vehicle parking during the operation hours?
Did she ask a question? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
If you used the, it sounded from like one of the letters, that the, the street parking was used during the day for your own personal parking during the operation hours? So I didn't know if, like, that, but it sounds like that would be fine during the winter also.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Well, as far as the parking, the, 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 the pickup and, and trailer, they're almost always parked on the street, yes? The, the handy help man, yeah.
Anything else?
I did want to ask. There's no front fencing requirements? Jacob, I guess that's a question for you.
Not for them.
I think the kids play on the front porch sometimes? Am I correct on that?
They play in the front yard. We do chalk on the-
Yeah.
-front yard, because currently, we are not licensed to be able to use that side yard until we get the fence, if this passes.
Yeah, the, the code will have, establishes a minimum amount of outdoor play area, and that required play area has to be enclosed with a fence. But you're not required to only let the children play outside in that fenced area. You can let the children play elsewhere, but you have to have a minimum amount outside in order to have, per child, in order to have that many children in the group daycare home.
Well, I mean, it's a fairly busy street, putting, putting kids outside unattended, which probably won't happen. You know, it has the same concerns as, as, as would a, as does the pool. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. I'll open up public comment for this hearing, if anyone from the public would like to comment. Seeing no one, I'm closing public comment and opening discussion.
Who, who asked the question about the parking?
I guess, I guess I might have one more question, just because, so you're saying that if it's an outdoor play area, it, there is a requirement for it to be fenced in? So if they're fencing in part of their driveway, and they have a garage, they don't have to fence in that proposed play area of the, of that concrete area in front of the driveway? That's the play area?
I don't think that's play area.
I would say the entire play area is enclosed either by buildings or by the fence. So there'd be no means of egress from that play area by the children, except through a gate in that fence, or by entering one of the, the buildings.
Okay, so that's not the play area, it's, it's just a distant view of the play area? Okay, okay. So it's on the, in this picture, it's just on the other side of the fence that's right there?
Yeah, so I mean, the, the-
Okay.
This is going to, this area would be within the fenced area for play. The fence would be here, and wrapping around.
And then go across the driveway, so that's-
Yes, yep. There's actually a fence across the driveway already.
But it's not here?
Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's behind me in this picture.
Oh, behind you?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a port to go on.
You can kind of, it'd be that weight right there, you can-
I knew owners before I'd been in the house.
Move to approve SUP 1911 and SPR 1914, subject to the following conditions. One, all pool barriers will be brought into compliance with the current requirements of the Michigan Building Code. Two, a certificate of occupancy shall be issued prior to operation. Three, the group daycare home shall be inspected annually by the building official and fire marshal for compliance with current codes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Point number one, the, the pool barriers, as they're brought into compliance, who, who goes and sees that they're in compliance?
The building official.
The building officials do. Is there, is there like an annual inspection of the pool barriers?
It would be part of the inspection of the daycare every year?
Okay.
And that's just the city inspection. This is obviously also subject to state licensing inspection.
Jacob, I'm going to suppose that anybody who wants to park on the street can park on the street?
As long as you have a valid tag, and if the vehicle's operable, you can park it on the street in the city, am I pleasant? I can't put one out without tags on it. I can't put one out on the street with a flat tire, but if it's movable and, and registered, yes.
And I'm just, the, reading the, the letter, the trailer is already, a business truck and trailer parked on the street in front of the residence, and I don't, what I'm getting to is that we don't get to judge who parks on the street?
Nope.
Am I correct on that?
I mean, a, a neighbor could, anyone could park their vehicle and trailer in front of the street, as long as it's registered and tagged.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is Z 1902. Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next item is a rezoning, a proposed rezoning of 10 lots, which constitute McGurk subdivision. Provided a pretty thorough overview of this last month. This is a subdivision that was planted in 1982 with deed restrictions, which included a requirement that only two family dwellings be constructed on lots within the subdivision. Five of the lots are developed already, five lots remain vacant. In reviewing the zoning map after adoption in 2018, looking for anything that might have been overlooked, or might be merit changes in the future, staff, this is one of the items that was identified. At the time the map was adopted, staff wasn't aware that there was a two-family dwelling deed restriction on these lots. Came to learn that from an owner of one of the properties in the subdivision. Other areas of town, other subdivisions, or condominium complexes where attached residential is required, as part of the development, our zone CD four with a residential dwelling use restriction applied, much like the zoning case that you had a public hearing on last month regarding Canal Street Park, the proposed rezoning would rezone these properties in a manner consistent with other similar properties throughout the city. And so staff is recommending that you recommend to the city commission rezoning the properties in McGurk subdivision lots one through 10, from CD three to CD four, with a residential dwelling use only specialty requirement. And I would welcome any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kane?
I, I have some. There are duplexes in the neighborhood immediately adjacent to this. What's the difference in the character between the neighborhood right next door?
That's a good question. I mean, the, the principal distinction here is that, is the vacancy of the lots. Heidi Court, which you're referring to, which is immediately to the west, is, I believe there's at least one single-family dwelling on Heidi Court. I think one at the front, and the rest are two-family dwellings. And the principal distinction is those, those lots are already developed, and in this case, there are five vacant lots that have been vacant since 1982. This change would do a couple of things. One, it would make the two-family dwellings a use-by-right, so it would eliminate the need to come before the planning commission for discretionary land use approval in order to build a duplex, which seemed to, staff, to make sense, because again, that's the way the lots are deed restricted, so it certainly would seem to be the anticipation of the existing property owners, that what they would see on those lots would be two-family dwellings. I don't know if that answers your question. There's just essentially not as much, yes, those areas could easily be rezoned CD four with the same restriction, and it wouldn't harm the folks in that neighborhood, but it really wouldn't create any benefit, given that they're already developed.
So the next question is, do CD four areas have different setbacks and different zoning ordinance requirements than CD three?
Yeah, generally speaking, the setbacks in this district are smaller because of the anticipated intensity when you move from a detached, single-family residential character to an attached residential character.
So in a CD four, the setbacks are smaller-
Correct.
-than a CD three?
Yes.
Do you know, could you say what they are?
Yeah, so in the CD four, you'll recall the case earlier tonight on Douglas Street, that's a CD four zoning district. For your front setback, you're going to have a zero-to-20-foot front setback, whereas in a CD three district... So in CD three, you're going to have, for instance, a front setback requirement of 10 to 30 feet. In a CD four, it's going to be zero to 20. In terms of side setbacks, in the CD three zoning district, it is six. In the CD four, there is no side setback requirement, again, consistent with an attached residential setting.
Right, so you lose the, you lose the setbacks? Because you could have, you could literally build all the way to the edge of the property line, all the way around the lot, in a CD four?
Not all the way around the lot. There is a rear setback requirement in this case. Given that there's not a rear alley, it'd be three feet. That's not, I'm sorry, that's in the CD three district, actually. CD four district, I believe, is identical.
It's three feet? So you could go all the way from the front and both sides, zero, and then the back has to be three?
Theoretically, yeah, you could do that.
What about the, the facades, the window glazing and that? Do you have, in a CD four, do they have to have the higher glazing requirements?
Another good question. Yes, they would have a slightly higher glazing requirement than in a CD three district, again, consistent with a slightly different character in those districts.
So they would have to have 20% glazing versus 10?
Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane?
Mr. Kane, I see that you're recommending a residential dwelling use-only specialty requirement if this goes to CD four. This is real close to Sun, is it real close to Sunrise Park?
Sunrise Park, yes. Yeah, yeah, a portion, some of these lots about it.
If, if they wanted to put in an ice, why, why do I care if they want to put an, I, to me, they might want to put an ice cream shop or something in there. And why am, why am I, why am I supposed to be upset about that?
I don't suppose that the intent is to indicate that we're upset about that?
Probably not going to happen.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be unlikely.
If the applicant saw that, that, you know, something like Doozy's would be appropriate near Sunrise Park, why should I be against that?
Well, I mean, currently, that's not allowed under the existing zoning.
But in CD four, it would be, right?
It could be without that restriction. Again, looking at the way other properties like this in town are zoned, they have, they carry that restriction, so.
So it's consistent with other?
Yeah, we don't have a, we don't have an overlay of that nature that would restrict the retail or office or commercial uses to just something relatively innocuous, like an ice cream shop, so.
But we do have a number of CD three residential duplexes in town. There's a number of duplexes that are CD three.
We do, and for the most part, they are located in, not in the concentrated nature that a development like this, or some of the condominium developments in town, that are more purpose-built with duplexes only in mind, are.
Well, I live on Brad, across from Bradley, and the whole street is duplexes for like a whole two blocks. But that's CD three.
Is that a question?
No, I just, I'm trying to figure out where the difference is between a CD three and a CD four. How this is different. So I'm not in support of, of changing the zoning to CD four?
So let's reserve this for discussion. We still have to have the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
I'm opening the public comment for this public hearing.
Hello, I'm Pat McGurk. I developed subdivision. Back in 1980, they had a requirement back then, that you had to have 9,800 square feet of land to build a duplex. Somewhere along the line, they changed that to 8,800, which allowed a lot more duplexes to be built in not preferred places. So that's one of the reasons, okay, I've got more room, you're concerned with setbacks. I still own a duplex in there, the one on the corner. I have no intention of putting an ice cream shop in there. Okay, it's for duplexes. I'm not going to decrease the value of my property for something like that. And my wife and myself have a little bit of say on that, seeing as how we own other lots of what goes in there. The other thing, question that you're asking about the C three of your C four, is I could have a, C three has to be an owner occupied, and you have to do it? Okay, the C four, I can make, build duplexes, and it can be a stair-step thing. That's what I did. I built two duplexes in there and saved money so I could build a house. And I think that's a good, good system, you know what I'm saying? Because right now, nobody's going to build a duplex in there and think they have to live there the rest of their life. It's not going to happen.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's the main reason for this change, in my, my mind. Is that correct?
No, absolutely not.
What's that?
The main reason here is, again, it's consistent with the way other developments are zoned that are similar to it, and it makes it a use-of-all-by-right.
Yeah, I mean, Heidi Court behind us, there's all duplexes. There's two houses. The one across from the entrances to the Patrick Court, and the next one up is a house. The other ones at the end of the street, going to the east, are duplexes. So it's all duplexes over there just about. And, so I'm just trying to make the lot sellable, is my purpose. So I can either build another one over there, and, you know, try to sell it, or rent it, or whatever, but I do something to generate some tax dollars here, more than what they're getting right now on those lots, so.
But you had the understanding from the, from, from the start that this was the situation under which you could build duplexes. Am I right on that? I mean, we're, we're looking at this because this was kind of a hiccup in, in the way it got zoned or rezoned?
We're looking at it, again, I spoke, it wasn't Mr. McGurk, but another owner of a duplex in that area, a recent owner, had contacted me to obtain a copy of the deed restrictions for the subdivision. We don't maintain deed restrictions, that's a county function. And so, in the course of that conversation, I indicated to him, because we do get those calls all the time, and it is helpful for us to understand what the deed restrictions say, that if he obtained a copy of them, I'd be interested in receiving a copy as well. And so he followed through with that, and in the course of reviewing those, and as I said, we've been reviewing the zoning map as well, knowing that there's a two-family deed restriction here, it doesn't make sense to bring Mr. McGurk or anyone else forward to the planning commission to get a special use permit when the property is deed restricted to only allow a two-family dwelling. That just to me didn't make sense, to put someone through a $1,050 process to get permission to build something that the whole neighborhood was developed exclusively for. So that's the reason why this came forward. We happen to, because it's, I don't want to say it's unusual, more often than not, rezoning requests come from a private property owner, not from staff. So when, when, in looking at this, I don't expect that the way I perceive a situation to be the same way that someone else perceives it. So we took the additional step, which we don't normally do, of mailing a letter out to the property owners before we ever even brought this forward, just to say, this is something we're considering. Is this something that you're interested in, not interested in, you'd like to learn more about? We'd be happy to answer those questions. So we did that first, before we brought this forward to you last month, to set the public hearing. So that's kind of the procedural history. It was just happenstance that the other gentleman in the neighborhood called with that question, that he followed through on my request to share the deed restrictions, and as I said, it just seemed to make sense. And if we can- And if we can remove that barrier from development from being there when it doesn't seem to serve a legitimate purpose, it seemed like it was a good thing to do that.
I just, I have the sense that we're semi-honoring a covenant that existed previously.
Yeah, I mean, there's, in some respect, a CD four district with this special requirement attached is very similar in terms of what's allowed to our old M one district. I'm not entirely sure why these properties weren't just zoned M one all along, it would have made a lot more sense, and that's how the other developments I'm referencing are, were zoned before. But for whatever reason, it wasn't, I don't know what informed that decision, if it was a deliberate decision or if it was just somebody sat down with the map, there's almost fifty-five hundred parcels in town. It wasn't something that was on anybody's radar. Back in nineteen eighty-two, when the subdivision was platted, duplexes were not a special use even in the city. And so it really wouldn't have probably mattered to Mr. McGurk or anyone else what district they were in, in large part, because there wouldn't have been that distinction. But that distinction's been in place now for about twenty-two years, and it just makes sense, in my mind, that's why I brought it forward for consideration to, to place these properties in a similar situation as other like properties in the community.
Mr. McGurk, did you have anything further to say?
No, if there are any other questions?
And so, and so in fact, Mr. Pat, this residential dwelling use only special requirement, you're, you're absolutely in favor of that if it goes to CD four then?
I, I'd like to get stuff built in there, yes.
All right.
Anything else? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Randy Golden, I'm the principal broker at RE/MAX of Mount Pleasant. We've been representing McGurks on the sale of the five vacant lots for a few years now with very, very limited activity. I agree, sir, that, that this is honoring a pre-commitment, these guys developed this subdivision almost forty years ago and said, we're gonna build duplexes here. And a couple of years ago, our legs kinda got cut out from under this. The, the idea of, of owner-occupied duplexes may work in other areas. From a marketing standpoint, from a real estate standpoint, real estate development standpoint, I may get this lady or this gentleman that come in that wanna build a duplex, as Pat Nancy did, to live in half of it, build some equity, and then move on to a single-family house. The problem with the situation that we've got now is when they go to move out and build that or live in that single-family house, they're going to have to sell that property, they're going to have to find somebody that wants to own or occupy a duplex. And that's, I've been doing this for forty years at Mount Pleasant. You can count on one hand the number of people that have come to me and said, we wanna live in a duplex and, and rent the other side. So I would highly encourage you to, to, to make the zoning change, to make these lots more marketable, and allow some development to happen on them. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you.
We seem to have cleared the room.
It's late.
Seeing no one else from the public coming up to comment, I'm closing public comment and opening discussion.
Move to recommend that the city commissioners zone the properties described as McGurk subdivision, lots one through ten, from CD three to CD four with a residential dwelling use only special requirement.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm very reluctant on this because while I very much always want property owners to have the rights to their property to do as is needed. I believe that changing the zoning from CD three to CD four is, is a Band-Aid to fix the problem of owner-occupied duplexes that exist in our code. So I don't want these property owners to be affected until we can fix the real problem, which is that the owner-occupied duplex ordinance creates a hardship for people who own duplexes to selling them. I don't believe that having a CD four property in the middle of a park and CD three properties is in the existing character of the neighborhood. I don't believe that it's fair to require more windows and the commercial-type look that is aimed at in the CD four district. However, I think this is our only option to give immediate relief to the situation that's been, that's occurred as a result of several zoning changes over the course of time. The, the duplexes originally weren't a special use permit, people didn't care for the duplexes, so they added that to the ordinance. Then it still was an issue that got brought up about duplexes being a problem in neighborhoods. So the ordinance then changed in two thousand seventeen to add the requirement of owner-occupied, so we are in this situation. I think we're taking, we're taking an action that's needed, but I don't think that this is the action that we should take going forward on all duplexes. I think that there's better ways to deal with the situation than changing the zoning to a broader CD four. I think that erodes neighborhoods, and so while I will support this particular change, I will also ask that we consider this in our planning, in some of our meetings, put this on the agenda to fix, to discuss this and come up with a resolution that preserves neighborhoods but still allows property owners the rights to do to their property.
Just wanna point out, you keep mentioning, as this isn't the first time we've discussed this issue, that if people sell their duplex, they have to sell to some, you know, they have to sell to someone that is gonna live there, except every existing duplex is grandfathered in and isn't subject to that requirement.
If it sits empty for a year, it is.
It is not, I wanna be really clear, it is not. Cause it, it, to correct the chair, they're not grandfathered in, they're explicitly permitted under the code. So the special use permit criteria before the code was adopted in twenty eighteen were modified to make that provision for duplexes that existed as of that date, which as of this date is every duplex in the city.
So special use permits, all the other ones expire after a year of not being used, but the duplexes don't?
Well, you're not abandoning a use by simply vacating a duplex unit. Just by not having a person living in it doesn't make it not a use, I mean, a purpose-built duplex is a purpose-built duplex. Even if it did, the code provides for those, specifically in the special use permit criteria, if it were to come before the planning commission for resumption, it specifically states that if it existed prior to February of twenty eighteen, it can be owner or tenant occupied, on and off, back and forth.
So if they sell it, tho, those rights stay with the property?
Yeah, and we have, you know, to Mr. Golden's point, we have about eighteen percent of the duplexes in the city are owner-occupied currently. Which just means that, and generally speaking, one of the units, although that's not true in every case, they're a very small number, where both units happen to be owner-occupied. But even for those folks, if they sell, they can, they could just vacate the units and rent them, that's permitted under the code the way it's written, so.
It's only if that structure gets torn down and they wanna build another duplex that.
Even if it's torn down, it was legally existing on that lot as of the date of the code, so it would still have rights to be there and be owner or tenant occupied. Yeah, we went to great lengths to, to assuage the concerns of the people who came out on that issue back in twenty seventeen. And it's continually misunderstood, so, like, I appreciate an opportunity to further clarify it, because there was a lot of confusion and there remains a lot of confusion about what that means.
Do you have the code number?
It'd be under the special use permit criteria, so it's in section four-ten, it's probably around page a hundred and one or two, somewhere in that ballpark. I mean, I'm the zoning administrator, so I will tell you that it's my job to interpret and apply the code, and that is how it is written, so.
I'm, I'm a point of order, I mean, we do have a motion on the floor.
Yes, we do. I think it's about time to vote on it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Next, I am on the agenda is TC nineteen oh three, Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair, our next item is a text change that was introduced last month. This would add, in a more explicit fashion, a requirement for recycling provisions to be made with multiple family, really all development types. This came out of our work session with the city commission back in twenty eighteen. Currently, the way the ordinance is drafted, it's a little bit opaque about what's required in terms of receptacles for development, kinda going back to older standards when recycling was less common. This just makes it clear that recycling is part of that solid waste stream, and receptacles must be accommodated for all new developments. So staff is recommending that you recommend to the city commission adoption of this text change.
Any questions for Mr. Kane?
Make a motion that we recommend that the city commission adopt.
Have to have a public hearing on that. We will still have to have a public hearing.
So no questions for Mr. Kane? We'll open public comment, seeing no one in the public, I'm closing public comment, and now you may make your motion.
Make a motion that we recommend that the city commission adopt text change nineteen dash oh three.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm assuming there's no provisions as to what constitutes recycling, what constitutes a recycling receptacle?
I mean, there's general standards for that, from a residential context, you have to have a bin.
Right.
Yeah, for commercial hauling, we have separate code standards under the general city ordinances that regulate commercial and multifamily recycling and minimum requirements, those are contractual relationships, generally, the city doesn't provide those services, but they would also have specific requirements about the, lack, missing the word. There'd have to be a quality container provided, that's not the best word choice, but that's the best I can come up with right now. You can't just dump your, your trash into any old bin, it has to be a sanitary, well-kept.
I'm, I'm sure it's gonna be a thing that people will co-dump. I mean, personally, I was like one of the first recycling recyclers of the year in Isabella County, so I'm, I'm all about that.
Congratulations.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, next, I am on the agenda is TC nineteen oh four, Mr. Kane?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is a text change that would allow for additional stacked parking on limited circumstances. Those additional limited circumstances would include places where parking's accessed from a rear alley or a rear lane, or a limited amount of stacked parking where there is a house, so a structure that is a house that's used for a non-residential or mixed-use purpose. The ordinance currently allows you to stack parking for one and two-family dwellings, and also for rooming dwellings and RSOs, again, under some limitations. So this would just provide for some additional opportunity in a few isolated spots for people to either maintain parking that exists in, in existing driveways during the process of converting the use of a house from a residential to a non-residential purpose, or places where someone does have alley access to parking and may wanna provide additional spaces without providing a full parking lot with the associated drive aisle, which will kick in in addition to drainage requirements, it's gonna eat up a lot of open space on those properties, and so this just provides a little bit more flexibility in response to a few issues that staff has encountered over the last several years. Unlikely to be used to a great extent, I would wager, but just provides flexibilities in those handful of cases where that sort of relief might be beneficial.
Any questions for Mr. Kane?
We heard previously that an owner has, because of all the complaints, doesn't wanna get into stacked parking.
Yeah, and like I said, that's why I wouldn't expect that this would be a really common feature. The situations that I've encountered are generally, again, those where there's a home in a mixed-use district where someone's opening an office or a small retail shop or something that's relatively low-scale in nature, if it's gonna go into a house, generally, those are the type of uses that go into a house. Houses in the community generally have a driveway, and those driveways generally require you to back in and out. Most folks don't have a parking lot at their residence, and so the code would, in this case, as the code has stood for many years, those driveways have to be eliminated in order for that use conversion to happen, or they have to be replaced with a parking lot. A parking lot is likely to be out of character at a home, homes are generally adjacent to other homes, many of which might still be under residential use. And so this just, again, provides that mechanism of flexibility in those limited circumstances for people to maintain an existing driveway for the limited amount of parking they might have for their clients or for their staff.
Are, are mixed uses CD fours and CD fives?
Yes.
There's no CD three or CD three L?
No, CD three or three L, I mean, not mixed use in the sense that we use the term mixed use, I mean, you could have, I'm sorry, a daycare and a residence, you could have a home occupation with your residence. But, yeah, generally, we're talking about like an office with an apartment or something.
CD four and CD five districts, so the blue and the dark blue on our map.
Correct.
So along Mission Street and Broadway Street and Pickard Street.
Yes.
Those are the areas.
In downtown Mount Pleasant.
In downtown.
Yeah, there's, there's, and there's other, we have other CD four areas in town, West High Street, portions of Broomfield Street, portions of West Broadway, beyond the railroad tracks in the West Side neighborhood. Trying to think if there's a, probably isolated other pockets elsewhere, but those would be the principal areas.
So the, so the stacked parking require, basically, you have to back out. So five spaces would mean five people back out onto Broadway, Mission, Pickard.
Really, the way I was looking at it is if you had a double-loaded driveway, you know, an eighteen-foot-wide driveway, you might have up to five cars in that total driveway, so maybe up to a forty or fifty-foot-long driveway, which is pretty standard in a, in a home setting. And this would just not necessitate that being eliminated as part of a site plan review for that use conversion. I'm not anticipating, like, for instance, McDonald's or CVS to begin stacking parking.
But this would allow that.
It would be feasible, yeah.
But as a business, as a business owner, that's not something you wanna do, it convenes your customers that way.
Yeah, I mean, for some larger businesses, we do have, I see instances where, like an owner-operator, and they know they're gonna be the first person in and the last person out, so it doesn't really matter to them if they can get it out of the space, cause they can get in and out of the space when they need to. Or they may, you know, be a joint proprietorship and, or you have a work vehicle that you can, you can block in, you know, those type of situations. It just adds a little bit of extra flexibility. Most of our commercial and mixed-use sites in the community are not, are relatively compact. I mean, most of our commercial areas developed in the forties and fifties or many of them, or much earlier, so people aren't working with a tremendous amount of open space to begin with, and enforcing a parking lot requirement in many of those instances is really, it's just unrealistic.
Any other questions for Mr. Kane? I'll open up public comment, seeing no one in the public, I will close public comment and open discussion.
Move to recommend that the city commission adopt text change nineteen.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I will not be supporting this because I believe that it causes traffic congestion on our major streets such as Mission Road, Broadway, and Pickard, and High. And I do not believe that we want to wait while four people back out for the, for the fifth person, I don't think that. I, I don't support that, and I think it actually is more than just a nuisance, I think it's a hazard. And there's, in my opinion, it's a safety concern. And because these are in CD four and CD five districts, I will not support it. I would entertain it if it were limited to CD three or CD three L districts, but because we're not limiting the districts, I am voting no.
I don't see this as causing extra traffic backups on Mission or Pickard, I see extra vehicular trips that weren't necessary causing more of the congestion on Mission, so I'm voting yes.
I can't think of a, any circumstance where a business on Mission would want to do this, that doesn't make any sense, business-wise, to do that. Anyone else?
Well, business, businesses, they're gonna have land.
Well, businesses, they're gonna have land use designations. They gotta have so much land.
No, no, they can build right up to the property line.
Yeah. I think where we would see this, if we were to see something like this on Mission Street, it would be in a place where people are taking their access from the rear, from an alley. So this isn't, this is, it's, again, unless it was a house dwelling on Mission Street, of which there are a small number, the only stacking that would be allowed would be if it was taking its access off the alley. So the spaces, the backing-out maneuver would not be onto a public street. It would be onto a public or private alleyway.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is TC nineteen oh five.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our last public hearing of the night is a text change to table four oh five A of the zoning ordinance, which would modify three standards for the CD three L and CD three districts. The first change would be to essentially reset the walls and fences allowance to what was approved by a text change of the Planning Commission back in twenty fifteen, which will allow secondary frontage fencing up to six feet in the side street rear yard. That's, again, consistent with that twenty fifteen code change. The second would be to a reduction of roof pitch from eight twelve to seven twelve in that district. I did get an answer to Commissioner Irwin's question last month, and in response to that, the Michigan Building Code does not have a specific minimum roof pitch, and imposes specific standards based on the materials and the structural load, and that's gonna differ, essentially, based on both of those criteria to each project. Three, increasing the maximum driveway width from ten feet under the current code to eighteen feet. And so staff is recommending that you recommend to the City Commission adoption of text change nineteen oh five.
Any questions for Mr. Kane?
Mr. Kane, why does roof pitch at eight twelve or seven twelve, does that matter? I had my roofer come over and look at my house. I like my house. My house is pleasant, pleasant to live in, pleasant to look at, and the roof pitch is five twelve. I've never had a water problem. I've never had a snow problem in twenty-five years. Why, why does eight twelve and seven twelve, why does it have to be so high?
Yeah, I mean, the main thrust here is about the form and character. So going back to the whole concept of a form or character-based code, you're looking at the character of what's being built. And so part of the reason for the higher roof pitch standard is just that aesthetic look. Part of it's about the enclosure of the public space, and so the building having some level of height helps to create that enclosure in the street, which is basically one of the core organizing principles of a form-based code, is having that sense that the street is like a room. It makes it an inviting space for people. If you think about it in terms of, I, it's way too many slides to go back, but you'll recall the picture, and it's in your packet, of the property on Douglas Street. When you actually stand on the sidewalk in front of that structure, you see very little roof, even at an eight-twelve pitch. So again, it's about, it's also about making that roof actually visible from the perspective of a pedestrian on the street, in a way that if it's set at a lower pitch, it basically, you see the gutter line, and you really don't see anything above it. So that's a good example. I'm glad that picture, it was fortuitous timing that that happened to already be in your packet, because that's an illustration. I know, I'm sure, like, me, many of you don't look at a roof and immediately know what that pitch is. I had to measure my own roof pitch to see what it is. I don't know if eight twelve, off the top of my head, is shallow or steep without looking it up. Eight twelve is, well, I would say not, not shallow. It's certainly not as steep as you might be led to believe. But it is, it is relatively steep. And again, it's consistent with the areas of the community where people said they liked the character, and they wanted to see that character replicated elsewhere in the community. So that's where the standard's coming from. I do wanna make sure you remember, because I, the Planning Commission doesn't see plans or submittals or site plan reviews for single-family dwellings, so single-family dwelling standards under prior zoning ordinances probably weren't something that you spent a lot of time thinking about, because you wouldn't have had those cases before you. But the city had roof pitch standards before as well. So the concept of having roof pitch standards in the city of Mount Pleasant is not a new one. This basically, we had a variable roof pitch standard on the old code. This basically just standardized a roof pitch so that it was predictable for folks throughout the community. Third thing I'll offer before turning it over and if, open the public hearing, the, we looked back at projects that were being submitted in the city, new construction, and finding that seven twelve was the roof pitch that was being used in new construction, almost universally. We even looked beyond the city to look at what's being built in Union Township, what private deed restrictions are requiring in subdivisions in Union Township, and we were continuing to find seven twelve. So seven twelve brings the roof pitch into an area where the Michigan Building Code doesn't require certain safety requirements to be met for construction, so roofs are a more comfortable building, and-
Seven twelve won't add any additional cost, as a couple of builders have alleged, if we get that first number-
I would put it, I would put it at the, in the context of an eight twelve adds cost, because an eight twelve implements those safety criteria, certain harnessing and things that have to be met.
Seven twelve does not add-
Correct. So that's the reason why the adjustment.
I mean, a seven twelve rafter is gonna have more wood in it than a four twelve, just because four twelve is like this, and now your, your top rafters are gonna have to be longer. Structurally-
Requires more shingles, too.
It, well-
Do you know what your homes, that you own, own?
It's around four twelve.
Your four twelve? I'm five twelve.
I'm easily eight.
Eight twelve. Mr. Leach?
Mine's steeper than that, yeah.
Very steep.
Relatively, yes.
Mine's pretty steep, too.
I, you know, I really like my home at five twelve.
Well, my home was built in eighteen eighty-four, so I think that was the thing at the time. Structurally, it, there's a lot of reasons why an eight twelve is actually easier to build, because cosines and all are working for you, actually.
Well, that'd still be allowed, so. That'll still be allowed, so.
And we did get the email from, and so there seems to be a shifting claim as to what Joe Oliveri did okay, but Oliveri isn't here, so I think legally it's moot.
Matter in my mind, but any other questions for Mr. Kane? I will open up public comment. Seeing no one, I'm closing public comment and opening discussion.
Recommend that the City Commission adopt text change nineteen oh five.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I would like to see the pitch change from seven twelve to four twelve. I don't see the point in over, in regulating the pitch.
I talked to two builders, and I would support six twelve, two guys that do a lot of roof work in town, and that's what they mentioned to me, okay? Over time, all the homes that I've owned have been re-roofed by the guy that said six twelve is what he, I don't think he had any input, but six twelve is good for the roof.
I'd go with six twelve.
Yeah.
But we can't change that on our own tonight, can we?
Absolutely.
Really, okay.
It doesn't sound like a particularly-
It would allow more flexibility, allowing it to go down to a four twelve. Whether anybody uses it or not, it's up to them.
Well, I reacted to the guy that, the guy that did six of our roofs, says six twelve is what he would very much like, okay?
It's a good compromise.
I don't think I've ever been on a roof, but, you know, I looked at what, he would be an expert, I tell you. He doesn't wanna fall off.
The higher the pitch on a roof, the more costs, and also, in the wintertime, you do have dangerous snow and ice sliding off a really steep roof. I personally, I'd like to see it go down to four twelve, but six twelve's better than seven twelve. More flexibility we offer, I think that better off everybody is.
Is a motion on the floor?
Yes.
I'm-
You have a motion in a second.
I mean, if you're gonna put in that amendment, I'm gonna say that this doesn't quite feel like the sort of reasoning that should go into that. Well, I don't know. What do you think about self? I want four. Let's go with that.
We went into form-based coding and followed a philosophy of the whole thing, is if we suddenly say this, you know, four feet, I mean, what are we doing for the rest of the whole idea of the look?
I concur.
Isn't the form, part of the form-based code provides flexibility, doesn't it, too?
No, not necessarily.
No, not flexibility.
No.
It's going for a look.
It's going, yeah. So-
People can come forward with, with what appears to be a more developed kind of justification, other than, I guess I could go with that.
As Jacob says, if there is new construction in town, it may well take seven twelve, but I'm gonna go with what my roofer said, okay?
I mean, I-
If it's, if it's not, if it's six twelve, if it's, if it's not six twelve, I will not vote for it. I'm not gonna go for seven twelve or eight twelve. I just don't know that much about roofs.
I don't think a six twelve or a seven twelve difference, like a eight twelve and a seven twelve, is gonna be observable to most people's eye. So I wouldn't necessarily, what we were hoping with the form-based code is that we'd get more predictable outcomes, but we'd also create a more predictable regulatory environment for people who build. Our old code had, as I said, a variable roof pitch standard, so we had to look at what your neighbor's roof pitches were and average them out, and that was your minimum. So you can imagine, like, my house, I have a twelve-twelve roof. My neighbor has probably a three-twelve roof, maybe. So the person, the lucky person, if they were ever to build a house between us, would essentially fall at a, I boxed myself into math, and I shouldn't have done that, but- They would have, their minimum roof pitch would have been set on the basis of those two roof pitches, which meant that basically every lot in town had a different roof pitch standard. And so this just gave us the opportunity, we know that people, not every builder is a custom builder. Most are gonna build something that they're familiar with building, and so that consistency allows them to develop a plan that they can work with, so.
And they have standard trusses and that kind of thing, so when you start getting into seven, it's like an abnormal truss, maybe.
Well, seven is what people are building, so I think, for whatever reason, and I can't speak to the reason why everyone seems to be choosing to do that today, right at seven twelve, but that does seem to be what, over the last several years, people have unanimously decided to do. And like I said, I don't think seven twelve really diminishes the character intent. I don't really think six twelve does. I think below that, I would perhaps get a little bit more squeamish about us drastically modifying the whole purpose and intent of what the code was set out to do.
I mean, I think if a builder is building, you're still gonna go to what used to be Century Lumber, I've forgotten. The DeWalt or DeWitt lumber, and they call up the factory and they say, well, I want this many of six twelve. And by the way, there's probably five to ten major ways to do a six twelve or a seven twelve, if you're into those sorts of structures and the kind of attic freedom you want and that sort of thing, so I don't, it might cost more, or less, but, but custom? I don't, maybe. Maybe the factory says, oh, that's, that's not custom. You're gonna have to wait three months. But I doubt that.
If we do wanna change to seven twelve, do we have to vote this down first?
You could, if the motioner and second are willing to entertain a friendly amendment, I think that we're-
Well, okay, I-
Not overcomplicate it.
I would like to make a motion to change the seven twelve to four twelve.
Let's vote on the first motion.
Well, I just asked that, I mean, can I make-
Well, if the motioner and second are willing to accept your amendment without any process, then they're able to do that, but that wouldn't take it to, that would take that to a vote.
I'll second.
You know, we need the motioner and second of the original motions to accept that modification, not a new.
I'd rather have a vote on it as I said it.
Me, too.
To start.
Okay. All those in favor?
Again, tell me what the motion is.
The motion would be to adopt the ordinance as presented tonight.
The seven twelve.
Correct.
Point of order, I mean, someone could propose an amendment.
Correct.
To this, right?
I second his amendment.
Which was what?
Four twelve.
Change the seven twelve to four twelve.
Who made the motion?
Commissioner Irwin.
Or did?
Oh, the original motion?
The original motion, yeah.
Yeah, doesn't, don't you have to agree to an amendment?
No.
Someone can introduce an amendment, and we'll vote on the amendment before going back to the original motion.
Okay, so let's vote on the amendment that would change it to four twelve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
A motion fails?
I make a motion that we change it to six twelve.
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
Now, you said that-
We still have the original motion on the floor, don't we?
Not, well, now, now, the amendment stands as privileged, so it needs to be dealt with.
Susan, what were you gonna say?
You said that there's not a whole lot of visual difference between eight twelve, seven twelve, and six twelve, correct?
It's gonna be slate from step by step.
Yeah. Four twelve, that would be very noticeable.
You will definitely know the difference between an eight twelve and a four twelve.
And we got into this whole thing, form-based, for looks. That was important.
Four twelve is so ranch house.
Yeah. So.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion changing the pitch to six twelve?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Madam Chair?
Divide the house.
Voice voted.
Doesn't matter. I think it passed, but we need to record your vote.
Okay. I vote in favor. Motion passes.
Five to three. Is that correct? Do we need to go back to a roll call vote?
Just to be sure.
Where are nays? Our nays on that? No, nays. Nays were three. Okay, so six to three.
Yay or nay?
Sorry, yeah, nay.
Okay, nay.
Yay.
So the motion passed, so.
So that resolves the text change, correct?
That-
Now we have to vote on the original.
That now, that now makes what's in front of us a six twelve. The amendment passed.
So then we have to vote on that motion?
No.
No?
You voted on an amendment to the original motion, and that passed, so that is passed.
We're done, okay.
Yes.
Next, I am on the agenda.
No, point of order. We voted on an amendment. It passed. We still have to vote on this package.
On the overall package. Yes.
As amended, I'm sorry.
Parliamentarian. Thank you for helping me out.
Okay, so all those in favor of the original motion as amended?
Say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Seeing no one in the public, I'm closing public comment. And then next item on the agenda is new business. Mr. Kane?
All right. Well, this is a really easy one. Final item on your agenda tonight is consideration of a zoning ordinance amendment to regulate adult-use marijuana establishments. So you'll recall, at the twenty eighteen election, Michigan voters approved Proposal One, which established a commercial marketplace for adult-use or recreational marijuana. Subsequently, State of Michigan had to develop rules to regulate that commercial market. They have done that as of July of this year. The City Commission initially took action back in June to opt out of the recreational marijuana marketplace in order to give the city time to review the rules that had at that point yet to come out, yet to be released, so that we could draft ordinances that were consistent with those regulations. City Commissions had four work sessions since that time to establish parameters for both a regulatory ordinance related to adult-use marijuana establishments and a zoning ordinance amendment. That zoning ordinance amendment piece is here in your packets tonight. It was formally referred to you by resolution from the City Commission at their August twenty-sixth meeting. I will point out, rather than going through every detail of the adult-use ordinance, zoning ordinance as proposed, that it is essentially consistent and identical with our zoning ordinance regulations for medical marijuana facilities. that it is essentially consistent and identical with our zoning ordinance regulations for medical marijuana facilities. So in terms of the districts and the locations where these facilities could be allowed and the special use criteria for those equivalent establishment types, they are more or less a mirror image of what we had before. Major changes, um, are few. One major change is that there is a business establishment type called a micro-business that doesn't have an equivalent, uh, business type under the medical marijuana law. So it's a new establishment type. That's a, um, business that allows retail, uh, growing and processing of marijuana. That is for a single proprietor, you're, you can license one micro-business in the state as a, as an entity. And you can only grow, process and sell, you can only process and sell what you grow yourself. You can't sell anyone else's product. So, really intended to be a very, a micro-business as it's termed. Beyond that, like I said, it's very similar to the other ordinance. I'd be happy to dive into the details if anybody has questions. I know not all of you, I don't think all of you were on the planning commission when the medical ordinance came through. Maybe I'm wrong. I know the other day I was looking and commissioners, or memberize, you've been around longer than I remembered. So, were you here when the medical ordinances came through? Oh, perfect, okay. So you're probably, hopefully, a little bit up to speed on where we were with that. And I'd entertain any questions about what's before you tonight. The requested action is that you set up a public hearing for the October meeting.
Move, move that we set a public hearing to consider proposed text change TC nineteen oh six at the October third nineteen regular meeting.
Second.
I did have a question on why the proposal zero-designated consumption establishments? Was there rationale behind that?
I hate to speak for the city commission and their, their particular rationale at that point. What I can do comfortably is explain. Designated consumption establishment is another establishment type that doesn't exist under medical marijuana under that law. And it essentially creates a public place of business where people can consume marijuana products on site. The emergency rules for recreational marijuana, as well as the emergency rules for medical marijuana, don't allow for consumption on the site of the facilities or establishments that are allowed under the law. So this is a new area. I would, um, my best memory is that there was not a desire to encourage that consumption activity in our community. And I think there was some concern about the uncertainty of this brand-new, unknown use type until we know more about how the establishments operate in other communities that might choose to permit them. So I think that was driving the desire to, at this point, not permit that particular establishment type.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, on, um, page two, Roman numeral eight. The following minimum distancing regulations apply to all medical marijuana facilities. Is that an error, or are we just saying we, we only want to regulate that for medical marijuana?
That is an excellent catch. You don't know how many dozens of us have looked at this dozens of times and not caught that, so gold star to you. Thank you for-
Crossing the medical.
Good job Cory. Thank you.
Anything else?
And in fact, if I could, Madam Chair, in that same sense, um, it's sort of a, it's a bit pedantic, but the, the recreational code and the medical codes or state laws, medical facilities are called facilities, recreational establishments are called establishments. So I might also suggest, in concert with, um, what Commissioner Friedrich pointed out, that on that same line, on page two, that we strike facilities and change that to establishments. So just by simply changing that to all marijuana establishments, it would be clear that it applies to recreational establishments.
And then Roman numeral three, a little bit below that, three small sections below that, right above the bottom of page two, there's also the word medical tucked in there too.
But it has establishment.
Yeah, so in that case, if we struck medical, that would accomplish the-
I'm all about pedantic, but come on.
I hope I used that word correctly.
Yeah.
I'll get a pass. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I don't think you're being a pedant at all, so.
Are we discussing though? I, I, the only thing I wondered was why a special use and not a special regulated use?
Isn't the ballot measure proposing it's not a special regulated use?
Yeah, and, so, you probably are all already aware that there was a, um, citizen initiative ordinance submitted to the city, um, that would regulate marijuana establishments under a different ordinance that, um, had the required signatures to be placed on the November ballot. Um, and so that, that will, is kind of also proceeding parallel to this process. Um, and that initiative ordinance does specifically state that marijuana establishments can't be treated as special uses. Back to commissionerize to your question, there's not really an answer to that, I guess. The, I think the intent was to regulate them in the same manner that medical facilities are regulated. And at the time of the ad hoc committee meeting back in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, a few years ago, there was discussion at the ad hoc committee about special regulated use versus a special use versus a use allowed by right and what tier to place those in. And at that time, sort of the consensus moving throughout the rest of the process was special use. There's no reason why you couldn't recommend as a planning commission to treat them as a special regulated use, um, if you so chose. The main distinction that would make is it would provide the planning commission with a additional layer of discretionary authority on, related to the location of the establishments, um, if you desired that.
Um, just to, I was on the ad hoc committee, so, um, the rationale behind not having it be a special regulated use is with medical marijuana, it's medical, you get a prescription, it should be treated more harshly than, say, a pharmacy, which is not a special regulated use.
Right, I, I agree on that with the medical, but then when it comes to recreational, it's like, yeah, I can kind of see where, um, I, I don't really care either way, I just wondered why.
I will say, it doesn't necessarily create any, um, strenuous burden on the applicant to make the distinction. It's the same application, the same fee, essentially the same process. We just would look at what else is located in the proximity. And so, if that's dissuading you, it's, um, under prior ordinances, the special regulated use process was a little bit more intensive on the applicant's end. And that's no longer the case. So if you, if you did feel like that might make sense. The other thing that I would offer is that, um, I understand that this is a big ordinance amendment and that we haven't had prior discussions about the recreational marijuana process, um, other than I think we did last December briefly in our work session. If, after the public hearing next month, if you set the public hearing, you have those questions or suggestions that maybe, you don't feel strongly enough that you wanna edit the, amend the ordinance and send it forward that way, but you just want to entertain that suggestion to the city commission, you could feel free to do that as well. So, um, just as another option, if you just want it entered into the mix of conversation when it does reach them.
Motion on the floor?
Motion on the floor.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. And next item on the agenda is staff report. Mr. Hayne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the administrative review report, we did approve two site plans, centralized meeting. First, fifteen oh four and sixteen oh eight North Fancher, this is green's towing, the expansion of the existing towage and salvage business, um, onto the adjacent property and the installation of screening associated with that, uh, business expansion. The other site plan approval was at three thirteen West Michigan. This was for CMS Internet. This, um, they've acquired that building as a data center. They'll be installing mechanical equipment at the rear or south side of that building and screening that equipment with a masonry wall to accommodate the conversion to that data center. I wanted to remind everybody that the MAP conference is coming up, and I think just two weeks from now, if you're interested, it's in Kalamazoo, I know it's not very enticing. But if you're interested in attending, the city will pick up the tab. It is, it's really interesting, a lot of, there's a lot of planning commissioners there. There's a lot of planning consultants there, there's a lot of people like me there. So it's always interesting to hear about other people's experiences around the state, as well as take part in the educational pieces. You can attend for a day, you can attend for the whole thing. So if you're interested, this is like last chance, let us know, we'll make it happen. I also wanted to remind you about citizens, the citizen planner course. It's a course I took, a few of you, I think, have taken it in the past. It's a really good course, if you want to get a deep dive into state law and why things are the way they are and come back at me with questions about why we do things the way we do here. I, I honestly legitimately recommend it, and it's not always held here in Isabel County. So, the fact that it's local certainly increases the convenience and lowers the cost to the city. So, if you're interested in that, let me know. For next month, we're anticipating they will have two special use permit, uh, requests for liquor stores at gas stations. I think these are the last two gas stations in town that don't already have that special use permit, so probably the end of the road on those. You'll have your medical or your, your adult-use marijuana public hearing. And we're also anticipating a presentation from McKenna and Associates on the draft master plan, which should be in your October packets. So you can look forward to probably a heavy envelope for October.
And I just want to put in a quick plug about that MAP conference. I attended two years ago as the planning commissioner here, when it was on Mackinac Island, attended the whole conference. And one of the things that I felt was beneficial to me as a planning commissioner, I could see is beneficial to other planning commissioners, is all these different experiences, whether it's that or, um, the citizens, the citizen planner thing, which I haven't taken yet, but I've talked with other people who have, help us put our planning decisions in Mount Pleasant in a broader context. What happens in Mount Pleasant doesn't happen in a vacuum. There's, there's a lot of things that might seem new to us, we're not necessarily reinventing the wheel. And so taking advantage of these opportunities is only gonna make, uh, more thoughtful discussions we have with the issues in front of us, as well as a lot of issues that don't come in front of us. Like walkability, bikeability, other kinds of things that aren't always on, uh, things from student perspective that aren't always, um, you know, up on the dais for us. But, um, I just want to put a plug in and encourage MIFL planning commissioners to make it to that conference if they can.
Again, what days are those?
Conference this year is September twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
All in Kalamazoo?
Yes, the majority of the conference events are gonna be on Thursday and Friday morning. The, the kind of heart of the conferences in that period.
So I, um, if we could talk about garage setbacks, uh, at a future meeting. I know you like to draft the ordinance and present it. That is another item that came up in our memos. And, um, possibly the owner-occupied duplexes. Maybe a work session, just so, maybe I'm the only one that needs clarity on that, but when I read it, I, I did read the ordinance again and I still interpret it that, I still interpret it the same way, so maybe we just have a, have a chat about it and why that's intended. As many of you planners have already, uh, talked with residents about that and know their stance on it. So I'd love to hear your viewpoint, and I'd like to talk about it in a group, you know, as our group, so that I can, so that I can understand, um, what is, what is the intention with that, so.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.